Ladies and gentlemen, it is 7:01 PM, September 17th of 2019. We'd like to call the City of Portland Common Council Meeting to order. You will all rise if you're able. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have the opportunity for public comments. We ask that comments be limited to three minutes in length or addressed to council and deal with issues that are relevant to the city and the council. Our first speaker is Joe Schaefer.
My name's Officer Number Two.
And everybody just did not want to steal your thunder.
Good evening. Nice to see all of you. I'm a resident of the city. My name is Joe Schaefer. And I wasn't sure that Item 19 would eventually have a public hearing, so I'm here to make my comments ahead of the game. I really understand the need to ensure that every voter in every ward has representation on the common council and that there should be a process to fill in when there is perhaps excessive absences. And that might include vacation, it might include scheduled other meetings, might include debilitating illnesses, or even a death, as occurred, let's say, in the county legislature. However, it is not chockingly a democratic process to put the replacement choice in the hands of only one person. Why don't we do what the county does do in a similar situation, which is to refer to the appropriate county political chair, representing the party from which that person would have been delegated or elected from, to offer up a series of qualified, excuse me, this is my wrongs, but qualified candidate for the council to make the decision, not for the one person to make the decision, or put in the place of a mayor, no matter who that person might be. I think you really need to reconsider how it's phrased and how it's been written. Additionally, I tried searching the city pages this afternoon to identify the composition of the Board of Ethics, or the Ethics Board. I understand its purpose, that was very clearly defined and very clearly put out, and of the five members. However, I was led to believe, and I'm not sure if it's true, that the Corporation Council is a member of the Board, the Ethics Board. And I do find, as I'm sure you will, that is a potential conflict of interest on an Ethics Board that represents the city. And I would like you to look into that matter as well, as long as you are doing something that falls under the realm of a process that comes through the Ethics Board as well. And I would hope that you would consider my comments when time comes to discuss this. Otherwise, I'm doing it as simply as possible within my three minutes. Two minutes and a half, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Our second speaker, Derek Reynolds.
I was asked by the Association to come and speak to you tonight. As you know, Chief Nicobacher retired on June 26, 2019. Since his retirement, he's been approached by Chief Glover and Assistant Chief Friedman several times to fill the vacancy. You were asked to honor the contract and keep the staffing numbers as-is, not to lose or gain any positions. You as a council spoke and met with the mayor, and certain areas of concern were common amongst the council. When a decision was made not to fill the vacancy, the Portland Professional Firefighters Association filed a grievance against the fire chief in the City of Portland for violating a collective bargaining agreement specifically in language pertaining to the code office and the replacement of Assistant Fire Chief Two, Director of Code Enforcement. The fire chief denied the grievance, stating that he has to come to the hire and was stripped of any technical ability to resolve the grievance. The next step was to take the grievance to the mayor. As we worked through the grievance process, members of the executive board met with Mayor Tobin, Corporation Council, and the fire chief to discuss the possible remedies to this situation. In an attempt to work with the city, the Association entered into its stay at the request of Mayor Tobin and Corporation Council. On September 3rd, you entered an executive session to discuss an offer that we view as a potential remedy. The council exited with no action and no counteroffer. The Association again met with the mayor, Corporation Council, and fire chief on September 9th to discuss further options. As the first date was set to expire, the city asked again if you would enter another stay as both parties worked to resolve this issue, to which the Association agreed. The Association worked with the fire chief's office to provide information that you have requested and been sent. Throughout the retirement of Assistant Fire Chief Two, Chief Nicobacher, and since the retirement of your subject matter expert on fire and codes, Chief Glover has stated that he has believed this position of Assistant Fire Chief Two, Director of Code Enforcement, is important and needs to be filled as Assistant Fire Chief. Well, there are several reasons why this position is important, and I'm going to cover just a few. Leadership and enforcement of codes. This position is the one that leads a department, and members of the department take their issues too. At this point, you have an office of minimal supervision at best on a day-to-day basis and leave the current staff without any guidance or support when needed. When I worked in this office full-time, I was challenged about my interpretation on codes and was told that I was just a firefighter, they didn't care what I thought, because they knew better than me, and they're going to do it their way anyway. Even though I'd already met with Chief Nicobacher, I knew what he wanted me to do to handle this issue, I still had to call and ask him to meet me on location. As I walked back on the property, the individuals started to raise their voice and yell at me until they saw that white shirt and gold badge. They suddenly calmed down and began to seek compliance versus screaming and defiance that I was so quickly met with. Whether it's the public or private sector, most people respect the decisions made by a department head or top supervisor. When it comes to customer service, the ability for someone to set the standard and make sure it's followed is how you'll get the best customer service and positive customer reviews. Code officers and firefighters are in the customer service profession as we take on a multitude of items. The chief of this office is the one who sets the standards of service and prioritizes the work to be done. We recently ran the numbers for the office for the timeframe of July 1st, 2018, through 9/9, 2018, along with the same timeframe for 2019. I'm sure you can guess, the demands on this office has increased, however, the uniformed staff has been currently caught by 33 percent. In a decision, in discussion with the current office staff, they're feeling complaints about things not getting done in the same timeframe as they used to. Some things have actually fallen behind, including permits and inspections. College students and local residents are occupying dwell units that are missing their current life safety and fire inspections. These are important items, however, there is no way two people can meet the demands of this office. We are at a crucial point in the level of customer service that we provide to constituents, contractors, business owners, and you as the council is suffering. We have also ran the sick time reports for July, August, and September for 2018 and 2019. The number shows that sick time is up nearly 200 percent. The current staff will tell you they're doing the best they can, but they're feeling stressed and starting to become fatigued. When it comes to life safety, this position is an Assistant Fire Chief and is pivotal position to the emergency scene. The position is assigned at duty night, is on-call every fifth night. When there is a call that requires a response of a chief, they respond. The position takes overall command of the scene in making life safety decisions. This is the position that coordinates with the dispatch center to make sure the appropriate resources are coming and the property owners are notified. Most importantly, this position takes accountability, the accountability role, and makes sure we all go home at the end of every call. Last month, we responded to four fires that didn't make the news, and one close call that we were very, very fortunate, it didn't ignite. Currently, this line is being picked up by a volunteer chief, and they are getting burned out if you ask them. As you can see, this is a very important position and affects firefighters, both the creative volunteers. It is the goal of every firefighter to go home to our loved ones at the end of every call or at the end of every shift. This position is crucial in making it happen. When it comes to relocating a captain, while it's been discussed just to move someone, to fill the position is not the best remedy.
Derek, I have to ask you to please wrap up.
Okay. Jim, do you want to finish up?
Mr. Mayor, I'll concede my time to Derek Reynolds.
Sorry, but without council's approval, in years, meetings passed, we've gotten away from seating time. However, if you want to pick up, we're about done.
I can do that. I'd make a motion if we let Derek continue. I think it's an important issue.
You can finish.
One, two, go ahead, three, one more for him.
Okay. Thank you very much. An attempt to relocate the filled position. While it's been discussed to just move someone to fill the open position, this is not the best remedy. The office needs a permanent supervisor, and to just move a shift captain will not resolve the issue, it will simply transfer the shortage from one department to another. The document that you've been providing will show you, no matter what captain you move, it will create unfilled duties in the fire department, and more important, will have a significant financial impact and out-of pago pay and overtime as well. Filling the position is important. There is an active civil service list, and to my knowledge, with the exception of one or two people, I haven't returned the canvas letter that they'd be interested in the position. I know you're all thinking they only want to work over here for the promotion. I can again tell you that's not the case. A majority of people on this list have served lengthy time in the office. There have been no openings in this office for the past six to seven years, so this is the first time we're running into the issue. Both Chief Glover and Assistant Chief Nicobacher did amazing things during their tenure in this office. While this position, while this position will come with challenges, that's where firefighters... Hold on, lost my spot. With the new position open, things will happen, with changes and challenges, and this is what excites the new firefighters who might be able to take on this position. Whoever you hire will come with passion, professionalism, and will do the best work they can for both the code enforcement and fire department. Since the vacancy created by Assistant Chief Nicobacher, the city has seen approximately $18,000 cost savings in salary and benefit. The Portland Professional Firefighters Association has been working with the city to find results to this grievance without going to arbitration, because we believe it can be settled and do not want to see either party spend thousands of dollars through the arbitration process. The stance of the Association and the opinion of your subject matter expert, Chief Glover, is that the position needs to be filled in order to meet not only the demands of the collective bargaining agreement, but also the expectations placed on the office by your constituents, business owners, contractors, and visitors to the cities, along with you, the common council, to meet the life safety of both the public and those firefighters. Again, we're not asking to create a new position, we're asking you to fill a vacancy that was created by the retirement of Assistant Chief Nicobacher and that goes needed. If you guys have any questions, I can answer them, or if no one has those papers we sent out or did print extras, if you need them. What's that?
I'll take the papers.
We're going to discuss that in a definite second. I have the documents.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Derek. Thank you. Jim Zelsky, you're okay with me moving on?
Absolutely.
Bruce Tyler.
Well, thank you, everyone, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I want to address Item Number 19 on tonight's agenda, and I've had a chance to talk to Katie a little bit, so I understand where at least some of you are coming from on this, coming from on this, and I understand what you're trying to do. I'm just not sure this is the right way to do it, and that's why I'm going to speak for a few minutes. The people elect our city council, and the people should be the ones to appoint to the city council if someone's not doing their job. If passed, this resolution essentially allows the council, under some circumstances, and I get that, to remove someone duly elected by the people, and we're going on the executive branch to replace that elected official with someone not elected by the people. In effect, pass judgment on someone, and quite possibly do so without knowing all the facts. For example, someone might miss two months of meetings or eight meetings in a year due to medical reasons. That by law, nobody sitting in your chairs will have a right to know about. So, again, I do respect what you're trying to achieve with this resolution. I've lived here for over 30 years, I get it, I know exactly where you're coming from. But I'm asking you to reconsider it. Because democracy is messy. But I've always had faith that the people will do the right thing in the end. Because as Lincoln said, "You can fool some of the people all the time, and all the people some of the time, but you can't fool all the people all the time." So I'm going to leave you this one last thought. If the people in a ward elect someone, should a handful of elected officials from other wards have the right to remove that person? Shouldn't the people in the ward have some say in that process? Thank you for listening to me, I do appreciate all that you do on behalf of our community. I just don't believe this resolution is the right way.
Thank you, Bruce. Mayor's report, there are two things that I want to touch upon. The first, the impending retirement for Fire Chief, and he's unable to be present tonight, but I would be remiss not to say a couple words about Chief Glover. So I've known Chief since before I was an elected official, and it was when he was serving in code and I had some work that I was doing on my house, and I found him to be fair and very helpful in terms of helping me work through some questions that I had. And as a council member, when he was in charge of codes, and also as a, as the mayor, while he has been the fire chief, I have found him to be an exemplary role model. He has led the department, and he's been good to work with. I've asked him tough questions, he's not, he's never dodged a tough question, he's always done his homework and been there from A to Z. So it's with a little bit of, more than just a little bit of sadness that I bid Chuck Glover a fond retirement, because he has been a tremendous asset for the city, and the people that are stepping into leadership roles and all of our firefighters, we know that they are going to continue to provide a high level of service, because they have been trained well, and they've had an exemplary leader as well. And on a sad note, we'd like to observe a moment of silence. There was a passing, and this is retired Sergeant Kenneth Buggs. He was a police officer, community member, family man, very much respected by all who knew him, so if we could have a moment of silence, please. Next up, approval of the minutes from September 3rd. You motioned to consider approving the minutes. John Bennett, second. Katie Silman, discussion, any concerns or potential alterations for the minutes. Hearing none, all those in favor of filing the minutes as-is, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Our first, well, before we get to our first agenda, very quickly, there's two agenda items that I'd like to add at the tail end. The first one is adding to the city's general liability policy pumpkin fest, so that that is covered. We'd like to put that at the end of the council meeting. And also, to set a date for a public hearing on the local law approving National Grid lightbulb program. So we can talk about that at the end with council approval. And also, we've asked council to entertain going into executive session for an update on litigation and an update on labor negotiations, and let's just do that after number seven, maybe? Very good. All right, first, a presentation by AT&amp;T on cell phone and data service, and then FirstNet. And we have a couple representatives here. Can you use the podium and introduce yourself? Chief Catalano, would you like to speak first? Do you want to lay some groundwork?
Yes, please. Thank you for the opportunity to present this once again. I think it was October of last year that I floated the idea, the possibility of switching the city's cell phone accounts from Verizon to AT&amp;T, so that as emergency service, we could obtain FirstNet. We've done a lot of work between now and then comparing costs and serviceability. We haven't really gotten anywhere to this point, so I'm hoping today is the day. I've asked a representative and a technician from AT&amp;T to be here to answer any questions anybody might have relative to the potential switch of vendors. The cost comparison that I most recently looked at and came up with, pretty much put them on equal footing, both Verizon and AT&amp;T. I think they'll be able to speak more as to what the bonuses or incentives are that AT&amp;T has that could benefit the city as well if we switch. So I would turn it over to the AT&amp;T representatives and open up questions for the council.
Good evening. So my name, I apologize for a little shortrope today. So my name is Elaine Wilson. I work in the business acquisitions department for AT&amp;T. I handle all different types of businesses in multiple counties in western New York. I would be a field representative, dedicated representative to you all, should you decide to make the switch to AT&amp;T. As Chief had indicated, we have talked about this for quite some time now. We have done demos, we have provided demos for individuals to use to go out and test the service, test the network. We've done price comparisons, we've pretty much gone through everything that AT&amp;T and FirstNet has to offer from an emergency standpoint. So we do have, I do have my representative Greeley Ford here to help answer any network-related questions that may come up. I'll open it up.
Verizon does not have this type of service, right?
That's correct. So AT&amp;T has signed a, it's a 25-year contract with the federal government to provide this service or offer to responders.
So there's nothing that Verizon has that's similar to what you have?
They offer some type of service where you have to dial, if you will, on your device to have a priority to get on the network. AT&amp;T is always on with FirstNet. You don't, there's no dialing, there's no throttling of data, where Verizon does this time. So those are the major differences.
So in emergency situations, there's no blackout, there's no trouble getting through and all that?
Absolutely not. So the way that it's prioritized on the network, there are primary users and then extended primary users. So your primary users are anybody that answers a 911 call, police, fire, EMS. They are all, you know, at the scene of the crime first. If anything else were to happen, let's say utility companies are needed, let's say we need to notify the council, the mayor or something, you all would be considered an extended primary. As the situation or the emergency gets worse, the commercial traffic is pushed off the network, and all of the primary and extended primary users are on the network. 911 calls can still be made, but commercial users cannot do data, won't be able to do, you know, daily things.
So you pretty much block everybody out if necessary?
If needed, yes.
Other than the priority people?
Absolutely.
And how much would phones cost?
So we have multiple promotions going on right now, so they are a dollar, well, for their devices, available devices that carry what is considered called band 14. I probably have Greeley elaborate a little bit more on that, but the devices are next to nothing for you all.
And is the FirstNet service fully functional and up and running for all of Portland County, all of this area?
I don't completely speak to that.
If their service is great.
Yeah, again, I'll agree with you.
There are some dead spots in Portland County. We're towards Wellington, Cincinnati.
I'll speak to that.
Insult.
I'll speak to that.
Any other non-network related questions that I didn't have Greeley talk?
You can beat me up on that part.
Yeah.
Thank you, Elaine. I know it's hard for you to talk today. So, good evening, ladies and young. My name is Greeley Ford. I'm a network grand engineer, radio access network. So I'm responsible in my department, we're responsible for all of North State New York and the six or seven northern counties of Pennsylvania, all fall under our jurisdiction. Our radio access network, that means that we're the ones who are responsible for the design of the network, where towers go, what frequencies go on them, construction schedules, we write the POs for all the crews, and we've got hundreds of them out there right now. We're responsible for the optimization of the network every day, we're responsible for the performance of the network every day. It all comes down to us. We are head of the operation for network, warrants network in New York State. So I've been here a little over 30 years. I built a cell site on the Portland, SUNY Portland water tanks, that was my project many years ago. Built one down in Etna, I've built several of them in Cornell University, Dryden, TC3. I'm very familiar with this area. You should know that AT&amp;T, which was set at one, is the first company here in Portland. Verizon was the first, we were. So we are the original steel here. So do we still have some challenges? Yes. And, you know, when we're not on a microphone where all my competitors can hear me, I'll tell you where we're building sites. Maybe an executive session one day or something like that, but I'm not going to say out here, right? So, but, yes.
So can I take that to mean that you are going to be building sites that would cover these dark spots in the county?
Yes.
Who would bear the cost of that?
Us, totally AT&amp;T, yes. Couple sites that, new sites that we're building here are in Portland, so we're going to augment the network that we have here now. I did a drive, I had some time, so I came down early today and stopped and ate, drove around, stopped and ate again, drove around. So anyway, I went to, there was a list of parks that you guys, Elaine gave me a list of places that were in issue. Sogut, Dexter, Yaman, Potry?
Potry.
Potry, sorry. Randall, Courthouse, Testa, Gutters Parks. I couldn't locate Meldrum Park, but anyway, just that, that shows you the green is solid coverage here, and that's all the spots on the map, all the parks, and I went to every single one of them. I went to Gutters Sports Complex too, and did some speed contests, a speed test, my contest, I guess you'd call it. I went there too, and I had a great experience over where I went.
In terms of coverage?
In terms of coverage, I had no problems whatsoever. I went as far down to the Elma Country Club, I wish I brought my club, they took them out of the car this morning, I could have killed it in an hour, quick nine holes that I left in the car. As a matter of fact, I looked for someplace around town to buy golf clubs, I couldn't find them, so, but, so anyway, but our coverage around here is really good. We have some sites to the south, to the east, going in. We have a site in Cincinnati, so maybe 13 or 26, 13?
26.
26, yeah. So, yeah, there's some spots between here and there, we're well aware of them. As part of the FirstNet contract that we got with New York State, New York State was the last state to sign on to FirstNet, and we made a commitment to the state to build a couple hundred FirstNet sites. So that's in a one to three-year plan, and those are committed sites. They can't be moved, we can't say, "Well, we're not going to do that one." These are solid, rock-solid commitments that we made with the Department of Homeland Security in New York State, we're going to build them. So most of those FirstNet sites are in rural areas. They're not in more urban areas. They're not in Portland. They don't need to be in Portland. Portland has coverage. Do they need to be in McGraw? Yeah. Hands. Do they need to be in a couple other places? Yes. Don't forget with FirstNet, when I say a FirstNet site, I'm talking about a site that is in a category of a FirstNet obligation with the state. We have other sites that are in our normal BAU, Business As Usual Bill Plan, so we don't categorize those as FirstNet sites. So every site to us is just as important as the other one. I'm just saying, as far as FirstNet goes, that's a lot of sites that we just, we build. As a matter of fact, this year, our Business As Usual Plan is the biggest it's ever been in the 30 years that I've been here. So we're dumping billions into New York State right now, and it's all well. So band 14. What comes with FirstNet is this new spectrum, swath of spectrum called band 14, it's in the 700 megahertz band, and that's the private highway for first responders. So this summer has been the first season that we've had to see the effects and the benefits of FirstNet. It's worked great for us at the state fair, it's worked great for us at Watkins Glen, Cooperstown, Baseball Hall of Fame, Harborfest, up in Oswego, all these events all around the state. We've had such great responses, you know, we can get some of those to you if you'd like to see them. We've had some great responsive sponsors from law enforcement, personnel, that, wow, for the first time, we got through. I'm not talking about Verizon, I'm talking about AT&amp;T. On any carrier, they've said it's the first year we got through with no problem. And that's, that's the beauty of it, that's what it's all about. So band 14 right now, excuse me, is being deployed mostly in urban areas and being spread out across the state. Just like everything else, it always starts in urban areas first. Just don't forget what band 14 is about, it's about capacity. So where do you need capacity? You need it where there's a lot of people first. And then, you know, you get to a city like, like, let's say Dryden, for instance, not a real capacity problem here, no matter what happens, but you still have, it's still going to get band 14, not today, but it's But you still have, it's still gonna get band fourteen, not today, but it will. And in the meantime, you have what's called priority and preemption. So, if you're a FirstNet user, you get priority over everybody else. Your call goes through, everybody else gets pushed back in line. So, that's what Elaine was saying. So, if you have FirstNet capability, you have priority and preemption over every frequency band we have. Be it band fourteen, seventeen, seven-hundred, eight-hundred, seventeen-hundred, nineteen-hundred, twenty-one-hundred, whatever. You have, you have, you have a priority and preemption over everybody else, so.
Have you had, excuse me, have you had any major emergencies? Has it been tested in any major emergencies in any of those places?
As a matter of fact, yes. We had a, you guys may have heard about this. There's a, Herkimer County had a gentleman who has a mud fest and I don't think four or five thousand people all of a sudden and he decided he wasn't gonna get DOH permits, he was just gonna do it. He's faced millions of dollars in fines now, so he's probably rethinking that as maybe not the best decision. You know, didn't have sanitary, sanitary facilities. Anyway, they, Herkimer County Sheriff asked, applied through the DHS, Homeland Security in the state, said, "We wanted a deployable, a Colt, a portable cell site." And so, we got it down there. I forget what the SLA is, but we literally had it down and set up with them like four or five hours. So, as a FirstNet, a FirstNet agency, you have the right to request such, something like, something that's gonna happen here big in Portland that you were expecting, there's gonna be a lot of people here that you were concerned about it. You could go to, go to that website and apply for it. Of course, they're gonna say yes and they'll tell us, "Get a deployable down there." That's how it works.
And so, I'm sorry, what would that do? How, how would that help?
It's an extra cell site that you, it's an instant cell site that you put in the middle of a bunch of people that gives you more call and capacity, more throughput.
So, if you're a place like Dryden and suddenly, or Portland and suddenly the population booms because there's a big event?
Let's say, let's say Woodstock was coming to Dryden, right? And they didn't, it's probably the only place they didn't apply for, but they would, they would say, "We need some extra facilities down here" and we'd bring them down on trucks, we've got a ton of them, that's what, that's what they're, that's what they're there for. That was part of the commitment with the federal government that we would have deployables in every state. I think in New York State, we have six or seven dedicated in New York State. Don't quote me on that number, but it's something like that.
Like any, like any memory to your computer?
Sure.
It's a cell on a truck, it kind of goes up on it?
If you have six or seven for the whole state, it's a pretty big state and...
What's the chances of more than one ever being needed on one day?
Right.
Very unlikely.
Do you have some fairly close enough?
Every state has them and we'll pick up the phone and say, "Can we have yours for the weekend?" And we do that, yes. It's just that the ones that we have have to go to New York State first.
So, can I ask Chief a question? Chief, have you figured out how many phones we would need?
I know how many, yes, for the whole city and/or for the mighty department.
For the, if it were to be police and fire?
I don't have it off the top of my head, I'd have to look in the, in the window.
That's fine.
I think for police and both, fire only has like one or two, I think, most of them use their own personal phones.
But wouldn't they have to have a phone to be part of FirstNet?
They, they, the chief can speak for them, but I think a lot of them have AT&amp;T with FirstNet personally. That's what, that's what AT&amp;T allows as long as you're an emergency responder. Even if your municipality doesn't cover it, you have a personal phone, you can still get FirstNet. Our department has, I think approximately fifteen phones. I'm guessing right now, I'd have to look it up. I think citywide, between phones and Wi-Fi, we're looking between fifty and sixty ones.
For a, for a dollar a phone?
Those aren't all phones, some are Wi-Fi, don't ask me what that is.
It'd be a little portable hotspot. Right now, since we start FirstNet, I think we just hit like seven-hundred fifty thousand subs across the country in the past year or so. So, it's catching on very much, so. You know, we expect AT&amp;T capacity within the next year or two of our network is going to increase by fifty percent. You know, our network capacity since like two thousand and seven when the iPhone came out has gone up something like five-hundred thousand percent, the network demand for data. We expect, we're gonna have, be able to handle twice, half as much as that in another like two years. I think I heard the chairman say the other day. So, all this FirstNet and everything else is about adding capacity to the network, that's what it's all about. That's the long game. Thank you very much, I'll take all your times if you have to talk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, most of our officers are gonna be in the city of Portland, there are some detectives that go outside the city of Portland, so those dead spots really do not matter to us, right? Cause as long as the officer stays in city of Portland, right?
Yeah, I'm not really concerned about dead spots because you can get that with either, any, any vendor.
Right.
It's the FirstNet capability is what I'm looking for. Anecdotally, one of my officers attended the SU game against Clemson and because he had FirstNet on his personal phone, he could use his phone in that stadium where almost everybody around him couldn't.
I rest my case. I rest my case. And we have, we have a very highly sophisticated, complicated, distributed antenna system inside the dome. The dome is broken up into like twenty, twenty-five different sectors of radio capacity aimed at separate seats and things like that. So, forty-nine thousand people, fifty thousand people, and they could still get through on FirstNet, that's what it's all about.
And it isn't, it isn't just for convenience. If, say for instance, I happened to be at that game and I was needed here for an emergency, nobody could reach me in that situation.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions here in contact.
Chief, you had the phones, you tried them, right? Have, okay. I was sure it must be okay or you wouldn't?
General item number two is discussion on the possible options for the city cellphone and we've got changes or not changing. So, Tom, you're gonna correct me if I misspeak, right? Talk, I wanna give for newer council members a little bit of the history because we did have a split in terms of our cellphone service providers years ago. And there, there was a move, and I believe this goes all the way back to when you and I were council members, to consolidate and a lot of that, I believe, from my recollection was due to pricing and that with one entity, we were going to get a better price for the city. And Tom, you tell me if you remember differently. But as we've investigated this, it seems as if there's a number of comparables in terms of the costs and that if we were to go to two different providers, we do not, I do not anticipate a significant change in cost. The cost of the phones and Chief, I've asked you eighteen different times about different things, the phones, the plans. So, not grilling, but making sure that we've done our due diligence. And I've gone back with Connie about what our current plan is. So, there has been a lot of discussion behind the scenes, which is why it's taken so long because any move like this needs to be the right move. So, three options basically. We either stay with Verizon, we potentially move, or potentially split. And if you would like a recommendation, I'll give you a recommendation.
Okay.
You wanna discuss first, you want me to share my thoughts?
Share your thoughts.
I say that you put the decision into the hands of the department heads because at the end of the day, they're the ones that will have to deal with if the service is good, if the service is not good. So, the reason why council got involved in this decision years ago was the financial implications and if there is a negligible or no financial implication, this is one of the reasons why it's taken so long, Chief, is because I'm not necessarily felt comfortable making a decision that might impact. He has to do his job, somebody else has to do their job. We have department heads for a reason. My recommendation would be to go back and let the department heads decide what they think is best because this is not a one size fits all.
It's amazing how we think alike sometimes.
I'm glad I'm sitting down before you say it.
Does splitting service add any administrative burden to whoever's doing the central processing of this or...?
I might be putting Connie on the spot.
What's the question?
Just, does it add any administrative burden to you if we're sharing the, if we're letting the department heads choose which service they wanna go on?
Oh, sure, it's gonna be double billing, no matter how you look at it. It's gonna be twice the work, but if the council, you know, you gotta remember, I'm got one foot out of an banana peel and one foot out the door, so whoever takes this over is the one who's gonna have to do all the work, so.
Quite the analogy.
When is the, when is the, I'm wondering, when is the, when is the Verizon contract up? And is, do you get dinged if you switch over before you end, finish your contract?
There is no contract, there is none.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for having me on tonight. I do, it's good.
And just let them each choose.
Well, you got, excuse me, you got Bruce, you got Mr. Stokely, you got, obviously, her chief, you got Wayne back there. I mean, that's not all the departments, I mean, you got Mr. McNerney, sorry. I mean, you guys obviously follow the emails and feel comfortable with it? You have a problem with it?
Yeah, Verizon has better coverage for my employees' work. We've checked Scott, Virgil, Cincinnators, Solon, McGraw, these are where my employees work or live. To be able to have to get ahold of them from my department would be impressed right now. S D W with the water departments.
Just let each department choose which provider they wanna go with and...
I'm finding that should we put it to a, make a resolution?
Chief done word, need to get it done, it's gonna suit him more than anybody. And like you said, it all, no matter what happens, they'll still have priority. Rest of the departments, they need to have coverage, Chris has gotta call somebody in from Scott or Solon.
Everybody walks away, you have to...
Sounds good.
Katie, your suggestion, I think it might be good just to memorialize as a resolution so that ten years, five years, when somebody asks why, there's something on the record. Resolution, consideration of resolution to allow, allow department heads to decide who their cellphone, who the department cellphone provider will be.
Should we list the two?
It is cellphones and tablets. We do have departments, for example, codes, I believe that they have tablets and their work with those are fairly important.
Do we just list the two providers, Verizon and AT&amp;T, that's all we have?
Can we throw that in the towel? Choosing between Verizon and AT&amp;T.
I mean, that's all we have now, right? I'm asking. Someone go out and get crooked or...
You know, no, I'm just... Choice phones. Motion to consider, Katie Sullivan, second bill carpenter, discussion.
I guess I would just like to note that I'm all for supporting department heads. I do wanna be conscious of the administrative burden that we're adding to, to the dump.
Josh and Oliver.
Need to go this way or that way. Y'all get the stamp.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Carrots? Alright, thank you. I will speak with department heads and basically give a date saying, "Hey, we need to know by," and then that way the city can proceed. Number three, resolution to accept, recognize and appropriate the following donations to the UCR. It's a total of one thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars, twenty-five cents going to Porch Fest from Lime Hollow Nature Center and then donation from Porch Fest, the event itself. Motion to consider, John Bennett, second, Captain McCarthy, discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Carrots? Number four, resolution to approve the city police department's entry to an MOU with the DEA task force. Motion to consider, John Bennett, second. Back with discussion. Do we have questions for Chief, discussion?
Didn't we resolve a few months ago?
We've had some past discussions, but Chief, if you wanna explain where we're at?
Yes, I explained to the council, most of the council, not everybody at the time, what the benefits and value is working with federal government for the enforcement of drugs. Even enter our city, obviously. I entered into an MOU with the DEA, I had a drug sergeant assigned to that task force out of Syracuse for at least, I think since the end of twenty sixteen. We've seen multiple benefits from that, but each year I have to sign an MOU with federal government. Their fiscal year starts October first. So, that's why I brought it to the council today. If you looked at the actual MOU, you'll see that one of the benefits is, is that any overtime that's associated with a drug case that can be tied to the federal government, which can be done. The overtime is reimbursed by the federal government up to the amount of eighteen thousand dollars. So, if there's a case that ties in here in Portland, that our sergeant would be working with the local task force, any overtime is borne by the federal government as long as there's a tie to that. So, that saves us a little bit on overtime costs for drug investigations as well. Right now, we're in a crunch with our personnel, our down officers and there's potential for another retirement in our detective bureau in the near future. So, temporarily, I've, I've got the sergeant who's assigned to the DEA task force here in Portland working for us as much as possible. That's the leverage that they've allowed me and that's what I don't want to walk away from. When we get to the point where we're back up to staff and I can have somebody working with the DEA more full-time. And it's important to note that they, they give us a lot of leeway, that officer works here a lot. He's not in Portland or in Syracuse all the time. So, what I'm asking is for the MOU to be approved again for another year. Tie up liberty of when to send the officer up there and when to keep him here. But right now, I'm keeping him here. I don't wanna lose my foot in the door with the task force. We have cases that are open that we're expecting federal forfeiture funds from, which could be substantial and I don't wanna jeopardize losing those either. Those funds that we receive from forfeiture has helped, have helped us tremendously with equipment issues for our budget. Those are a lot of items that we are able to obtain, I don't have to ask council to put into the regular general fund budget for the police. I'd like to continue that as long as the United States government lets me do that. So, if, is there any questions, anybody has on the actual value of me involved with this task force? So, I have Lieutenant Strangeway here who could answer those. He was assigned to it for a time period, he's not now. I have another sergeant assigned, again, that sergeant's here for right now.
I, my one worry, as I've been on council numerous years, I've gotten more into the cost of, from working this comp to other issues. Again, my overriding concern is if one of our officers is out of the city and gets injured to where it could become a two-seven-seventy. Federal government's not gonna help us with that cost. That is a burden on the city taxpayers. And that, again, as I've said, now that I get very much involved with it.
That's a risk we take every day with every single officer, John. And the work the officer's doing in Syracuse is more office work than anything else. So, I understand your concern, it's a valid concern, but it's a concern every day for every officer that I have, no matter where they go.
And that, I completely understand and agree with you, but the everyday work is for the city residents. And the task force, well, I see wonderful things with the DEA task force. The bottom line is even on... The bottom line is, even though whomever might be doing it, like the administration a lot of times, they're still out of the city and you never know in police work when something bad might happen. And again, too, that's, that's one of my concerns.
And it's the same, it's the same thing with our local drug task force. If he's with our local drug task force, which he lives with, and he gets hurt in Marathon, it's the same thing. It's just, it's the work that you do.
That I understand too, but at least it'd be within the Portland county, which is a little. Now, yeah, Marathon, Portland County is not gonna help us with the tools that we see. But at least to draw back or at least to understand what would be, would be helpful within Portland county.
But you're walking away from the resources of the federal government for drug investigations. That's a big walk away.
I'm torn, personally, I'm torn on this, but I've got concerns.
I wouldn't do this as the chief of police if I didn't think it had value. I don't know what.
I understand that too, and that's one of the reasons I'm torn on this.
Chief, can you remind us of, um, outcomes for the city of Portland? At times when it has benefited us, cases that have been resolved, that have, um, benefited us directly?
Sure. Sorry, yes, Mike Strangeway, lieutenant downstairs. All of the cases, where we, when we have a, when we have a, uh, man in the game on this for DEA, these federal cases can all be geared towards or with Portland in mind in some way. Without, without a stake in the game, that, that doesn't happen, okay? The people in Syracuse don't have a terrible amount of regard for us down here. That being said, you have to understand, and this speaks to you, Mr. Bennett, that you can't enforce drug laws, you cannot make a significant impact on drugs in Portland, working in Portland. And that's the bottom line, and that's the truth. Portland is not a source of supply, city or county. All of our drugs, almost entirely, come from the Syracuse area. And if you're not doing anything to gear your enforcement in those areas to prevent what's coming down here, you're, you're spinning your wheels, you're not making a difference. We have, when we do big seizures, when we've had large seizures, um, in the city of Syracuse and elsewhere, that's what makes a difference on what's available in Portland. Not a small arrest somewhere in Portland county. The availability of narcotics, it's, it's, it's difficult to find a large-scale supplier of narcotics. Certainly, in, in, within Portland county, it's nearly impossible. But even in a bigger place like Syracuse, it's difficult to find a large-scale supplier. It's very easy to find someone who's an addict, who would like to make a couple of dollars to get their next supply of narcotics, to drive up to Syracuse and meet someone and bring narcotics back. That, you'll never stop that, okay? As long as drug addiction is a problem, you're not gonna stop people from driving to Syracuse to get drugs. The best we can do is, with Portland in mind, is to try to stop what's up there from coming down here. And that's what we're able to do. Because we have people involved in it, most of the cases out there, and this too, goes towards the danger, again, like you said, you're never gonna take all the danger out of this job. The vast majority of federal cases are wiretaps. You're literally sitting up there, listening to phone calls, writing warrants, and issuing arrest warrants and search warrants that are served by SWAT teams, that have nothing to do with you, but based on what you're listening to on the phone and reading on text message. And that's what almost all of the cases up there involve. Down here, if you're working a case, even though they're smaller cases, with smaller timed dealers, the cases still need to get done down here. Those are boots-on-the-ground cases, okay? We don't do wiretaps here locally, we don't have the capability to do those. We have done a couple in the past, but I could count them all on one hand, that I'm aware of. But we had a seizure up there, we seized sixty-two thousand bags of heroin. Unheard of, you would never get anything even bordering on that in this area. That makes a difference on what's available for the people that are going up there to get narcotics and bring them back here. Which is all we have. We don't have a person here that has ties with cartels, that are bringing narcotics in, so far as I'm aware. If we do, the DEA will ultimately find it, but there are people like that in the city of Syracuse and the surrounding area.
That makes sense, but the impression, the impression among city residents is that Portland has a drug problem.
Understood.
And for a while, we heard a lot about the, um, one pod meth people cooking up stuff on the back of bicycles and then, in the front of, the cab of a truck, all over the place. So, you've been, we've been on the task force since 2016. What's happened in Portland, have the numbers of, do you, do you have any kind of data to support that the, that the number of drugs in Portland have gone down? I haven't heard much about the meth, that seems to be down, but.
It certainly is. So, the drug, just to speak to the meth, the meth reduction is attributed directly to our involvement with the federal government. In 2014, we had thirty-nine meth labs. In 2015, we had thirty-four, sixteen thirty-one, and seventeen thirty-three. At the end of 2017, the DEA, uh, led an investigation along with the state police, targeting those that would purchase pseudoephedrine for the manufacture of methamphetamine. There is no local law that prevents people from doing that, there is a federal law that prevents them to, from doing that. That operation covered three counties, Portland was one of which, and targeted eighteen defendants. Eight of those defendants were Portland county residents and were among our most prolific meth manufacturers. Those people all received federal prison sentences, not for making meth, but just for buying the items that would be used to make meth. Something that we could have never done without involvement with the federal government. And that's what put a stop to meth, so, to get to it, you're talking about thirty-nine, thirty-four, thirty-one, thirty-three, but we then went to ten, and I believe this year we're in single digits currently.
Would you mind emailing, we need that information, so I can send it out to people.
Of course. Understand also, our drug trend has changed. What we're dealing with now, um, almost exclusively in Portland is something called bat salts, or you'll hear people call it molly, it's not actually, molly is a street slang name for it. It's just bat salts, plain and simple, it's a, it's a synthetic substance. Usually, it's not manufactured locally, most of it comes from China, and, uh, difficult, difficult thing to enforce.
So, are there trends beyond just the meth that we're seeing decrease here in Portland? Like, has, have you seen since the involvement, bat salts trends go down or any other?
Opi, bat salts is, bat salts is actually up. The state lab is not testing for bat salts, and there's some, they constantly change the formulation, I'm not gonna try to bore everyone with this, but they, they changed the formulation slightly to keep it from being a controlled substance all the time and falling under federal law. And as a result, it comes back no controlled substance, and it is honestly very difficult to prosecute at times.
Isn't that what they were doing with synthetic marijuana?
That's exactly right.
And we don't care about that anymore?
That, well, I, I don't know that we don't care about it anymore, but you don't hear about it. Yes, you're absolutely right, we don't. And I would hope that this would pass as well, it's a terrible, terrible thing. And my, my feeling is, and I don't have exact numbers for you, uh, Ms. McCarthy, but my feeling on it is, from what I see and from what, um, I've experienced, 2010 to 13 were our biggest opioid addiction years here. It remains a problem, opioid addiction, I mean, you just have to turn on the TV, it's a huge problem everywhere. But I, I believe that the presence of heroin and heroin use and opiates in general, including prescription medications, is down.
Thank you.
Of course.
Mike, since 2016, how much money have you brought in from the forfeitures? Exactly, do we have a total on that?
I don't, Bill, it's funny, I just was looking, tried to look it up before I came up here earlier today. Uh, I don't have the exact number on that, and I, honestly, I don't think the money comes directly to us. I think it ends up upstairs somewhere, and so sometimes it's difficult for me to keep track of what's coming.
It's in a separate, uh, it's not in the general.
I know that we have on top, we have.
Hey, Mac? I would have to look it up, it goes into trust accounts.
Is it like thousands or tens of thousands? Any rough idea?
I would prefer to have, give you an exact number by email.
And, and understand, we've spent it down too within those years because that's mandated by the federal government, you can't just hang on to what you're assigned, you gotta spend it.
We have seized assets totaling over three hundred thousand dollars in account now. That being said, that doesn't mean we're getting three hundred thousand dollars. Those assets are split, uh, based on your involvement with the investigation. So, if you are the case agent, or you have a lot of involvement in investigation, your department will receive, you know, a larger percentage of those assets than the other departments.
Which is why we try to stay involved as much as we can with everything.
We have on our agenda tonight, uh, purchased two new police vehicles. Transportation is to and from Syracuse, is that by personal vehicle or is that by, uh, department vehicle?
That's a department vehicle.
Do we give reverse for that mileage?
The, yes, they pay for the fuel.
Okay.
Okay, they provide a gas card to the assigned task force officer, they use the card, it's a credit card, they fill it wherever.
That doesn't cover wear and tear, then?
No, no.
And are there other departments in the Syracuse area that are involved in this? Have they stayed involved in it, or has anybody kinda stepped out?
There ha, there have been people that have been removed during the time I was there. Certainly, a, a failure to bring cases, um, and to participate in the work will, will get you removed up there, okay? They, they want people that are going to be productive there, so.
None of the other departments have willingly debarred or out of it?
And once, Syracuse PD recently, the city of Syracuse itself, a lot of the area agencies have been in it, Onondaga County Sheriff's Office, Auburn PD, some others. Syracuse PD was not in it for a time over some political dispute, and I don't know a lot, an awful lot about that, but they are in again now. Of course.
So, Onondaga County was, but they are not current?
They are, they are there.
Are?
Yes, they are.
Is that a recent change?
No.
Cause I had a conversation with somebody from Onondaga County, something, the impression that they were not.
They are, Fred Mosher is the representative there.
Counsel, further discussion.
And hopefully we're able to set the record straight, I think there was a lot of disinformation about our involvement with the DEA. So, I hope we've given you enough to make, uh, the right decision, or, or a good decision, if you're comfortable with. Appreciate that.
I guess if we're gonna continue on with this program, I would like to see some of the money put towards the, uh, wear and tear on the, on the vehicles that are involved. And actually be part of the budget item.
It's hard, I, I mean, we could do that, it's hard to say what the wear and tears other than normal maintenance, oil changes, brakes maybe, but we don't have any vehicle issues with the ones going back and forth to Syracuse. It's actually probably better on vehicles to do a little long-term driving like that than just buzzing around the city all day. I'm not on the habit, I don't know that, but, uh, I mean, certainly we could, if we need to, put it towards that, but I mean, maybe the deputy chief could mention, I don't know that there's any more wear and tear on one of the vehicles going to Syracuse than any other. It's just typical maintenance. Okay, thanks.
Further discussion. Your motion on the floor, correct?
Yes.
Uh, so, it's number four, entering into this MOU, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
One five fails. Agenda item number five, consideration of the resolution to lift the hiring freeze for the water department. Motion to consider, John Bennett, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion.
Now, is this vacancy due to somebody retiring or?
Yeah, Mike Milligan retired in, uh, August.
Yep, finally.
Don't say that.
Finally got his, like, his permissions.
I said, careful.
Somebody got a current vacancy, how long has the position been vacant?
Uh, August twentieth, retired.
Where do we stand in the civil service?
Well, it's, uh, it's not competitive, uh, I've been receiving applications. We advertised, um, I got five applications right now, but my admin do obviously, too, a little time increase, so. And I have advertised them. And we have three right now, three distribution workers, this brings us back to four.
Additional responsibilities in addition to water?
Um, snow removal in the winter. That's, you know, obviously that's big for us in the winter here, so. We have snow removal responsibilities, they have to get CDL within six months of employment. So, again, we can go through this again in six months possibly, but everyone who I hire usually falls in step, falls in line and gets their CDL right, right along. Or they come, we have a couple of the applications ready to, you know, that's one of my steps.
Questions, further discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Agenda item number six, resolution to hire a water distribution maintenance worker in the water department, motion to consider, John Bennett, second, Tom Michaels, discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. This is still you?
Still me.
Number seven, consideration of a resolution for council to recognize and appropriate one hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars revenue in insurance recoveries for non-salvageable DPW water and appropriate it to total proceeds, uh, account A fifty-one ten dot five forty-five hundred. Motion to consider, John Bennett, second, Tom Michaels, discussion.
June, June twenty-seventh, June twenty-third to June twenty-eighth, a nineteen ninety-seven motor caught fire while working in the tub grinder area. Hydraulic hose blew, uh, spray under manifold, our entire department came and put it out. Damage, total loss. As I told you in the email, I've, I've been kinda pricing them out. We can get one that's ten years earlier, younger, if you will, with less hours. Obviously, if you allow me to, uh, transfer the money, then I'll put out an RFP, and I'll get official quotes on the city's procurement policy. Uh, anywhere from one hundred and fifteen to one hundred and forty thousand dollars is what, uh, we're looking for. And again, if we get three that are similar in, in hours, one might be younger, one might be older, but again, um, as one of the older persons, I think it was Kat, asked if there is any money left. Which I, I hope there will be, there's more than one piece of equipment needs improvement down with the DPW. We have a patch truck, we loaded with four tons of Sukko, by the time we get it back with, we're gonna have three ton in it, so. I'd like to buy a new box for that patch truck.
That's a slight exaggeration.
Uh, not much, but yes, it's exaggerated.
And you don't have to worry about it rusting out.
Further questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Asked at this point for council to adjourn into executive session for an updated litigation, an update on labor negotiations, Corporation Council. I'm trying to recall, any potential for action regarding executive session afterwards?
On the one item relative to labor contract, it's simply an update on litigation, no action is expected.
Or should be. So, litigation is an update, labor negotiations, a potential for action. Motion to con, or motion to consider journey into executive. Motion to con, or motion to consider a journey into executive session, Bill Carpenter, second, Troy Beckwith. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll be back shortly, and we do anticipate the possibility of action afterwards.